Good evening, everybody. I'm Melanie Needle from the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. Thank you so much for making time in your evening to join us on the Button Up Vermont Workshop. Just to let everybody know, this workshop is being recorded, and it will be available on the Button Up Vermont webpage under Events in a few days. So this evening, we have Echo White from Efficiency Vermont. She's the Customer Engagement Manager. We also have Michelle McCutcheon-Shore. She's the Lead Community Engagement Staff focused on helping Energy Committee members in Chittenden County. And then we also have Dwight DeCosta from the Champlain Valley Office of Economic Opportunity. He's the Director of Weatherization Services. So I'm really excited to get this presentation kicked off. Becca, Dwight, and Michelle have really exciting information to share with you all about weatherization and the really exciting savings and incentives that are available for all sorts of energy projects that you're looking to get involved in during this cold season. So with that, I will hand it over to Becca.
Cool. Thanks so much, Melanie, and excited to be virtually in Chittenden County. I'm going to start sharing my screen to show the presentation. So hopefully, you are all seeing a presentation now. And, okay, I got thumbs up, so we're in the clear. So this is a part of the Step Up to Button Up Regional Presentation Series that's happening throughout the state. And if you're familiar with Button Up, my job is to coordinate all the different energy committees and towns that are participating. And this is a way to regionally bring together all the information that we have as a part of the weatherization education part of the campaign. Similar to what we were trying to do last year in person, the goal is to give you some of the same tools in a virtual place. So I hope you learn something new, and I'll dive right in. And again, if you have questions, Melanie has kindly offered to monitor the chat. So if you have questions, if they feel like the right time to have them answered during the presentation, I'm happy to respond, but I'll save a little bit of time at the end. Oh, you can see that I put topic as the second piece. So drumroll, please, it's on Tips for Renters and Landlords. So that's the topic. A little bit about Button Up Vermont before I dive into that first section. It's a campaign that has a ton of different partners. So these are some of the organizations that you might be familiar with that support different energy-related work throughout the state. We've also got just about every utility company in the state or co-op is a part of the campaign. And then on top of all of our different electric utilities, we also have every regional planning commission, like the fabulous CCRPC. So we've got a really good group of collaborators this year. So I'm going to be presenting this section for about 15 to 20 minutes. So really, a high-level take on what weatherization is. And if you've got specific questions about your home or your setup, one of the tools we have for the Button Up Vermont Campaign this year are virtual home energy visits. So if you're not sure where to start and you're not thinking you're getting to a project this year, signing up for a virtual home energy visit, they're starting to be scheduled in January. That could be a really good opportunity for you. So we can talk a little bit about that later, but I did want to let you know you can get some specific guidance to go deeper in your home beyond this. So this is my favorite slide of the whole presentation. I kick it off big. This is the analogy for what weatherization is. If you are like me and you went on a walk today and did not bring a windbreaker, you're going to understand this just from that activity alone. So your sweater, like the one I'm wearing right now, that is similar to the insulation we would have in our homes. So even though you might have a nice warm sweater on and you're outside like me on my walk, you'll still have, through those cable knits, air will go through, cold air will flow through. So on top of my insulating sweater, I also want to bring a windbreaker, which represents our air sealing. So that air sealing removes those holes, and it prevents that cold air from getting in, and it keeps the hot air from getting out. So when you combine insulation and air sealing, you get the comfort and savings with the same way you might your sweater and your windbreaker. I love that presentation slide. So what is buttoning up? So when we think about buttoning up our homes, the first thing to know is that because of the principle of warm air rising, when there are leaks or holes in your home, the hot air actually escapes through those holes. That can be out of your roof, your attic, those upper stories. And then, just to make it even worse, that cold air and those drafts actually come through those leaks in the basement or lower stories, and we call that the stack effect. And those leaks actually make the insulation less effective. So even when you have insulation, that air movement reduces the effectiveness. Some very common locations for leaks would be a fan vent that can be in your kitchen, like your kitchen stove, a dryer, a bathroom fan, attic hatches, chimneys, recessed lighting, outlets, any door or window, basements, and any place where there's joints or corners where the walls or floor meet. So lots of places where air sealing could be a benefit. Next, you really want to think about prioritizing your insulation in relation to that analogy we used before, where that sweater would contact that windbreaker. So you want to prioritize insulation in all the places with those most common leaks. And this is a nice illustration of some of those locations. So now that I've explained to you what weatherization is, that you're a complete guru now. You might not be Dwight DeCosta level, but you're getting there. When you're thinking about buttoning up, you're an expert, but there might not be clear reasons why you would want to weatherize, even if you know the science behind it. So these are the four big reasons why you would want to button up your home and the value that it can bring, not only to you, but to the whole state. So the first reason, saving money. So comprehensive weatherization can save Vermont households quite a bit, especially on fuel costs. So historically, households save about 15% after a project is completed. And even when we save money, you might be saving fuel costs for your home, you're also actually saving money for the state. And you're doing that because when we spend money on fossil fuels for heating, 78% of that actually leaves the state of Vermont. So you're not only saving money for you, you're essentially saving money for the entire Vermont economy by keeping it local. The next reason would be increasing comfort. And this is my caveat, or my kind of guilt-free Becca pass on, if you have a room in your home that you don't use for part of the year, you know what room I'm talking about, that you don't go into because it's either too cold or too hot. This is my pass, you don't need to live like that. You can weatherize your home, and you could use all the spaces that are available to you. So not only do you have more time probably being spent in your home, you also want to have spaces that are usable and comfortable. So comfort is a piece to weatherization that I just don't think we stress enough. And at the same time, you might have spaces in your home that you do use frequently, but just are uncomfortable. You might also see an improvement in air quality when you weatherize your home, which is really top of mind for a lot of us when we think about better health for our families. The other two reasons are saving energy and reducing carbon pollution. And I always thought of those as the same thing, but they're actually different. So when we think about saving energy, right now, our heating for Vermont, our heating for homes and businesses makes up 42% of our total energy use as a state. And again, 78% of that leaves our state with fossil fuel usage. So buttoning up our homes actually reduces that usage. And in addition to that energy savings, it also does have an impact on carbon pollution. So the less fuel we burn, the fewer pollutants actually end up in our atmosphere, and that's what's been contributing to climate change. As of 2015, 28% of Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions came from heating our buildings. So that's the second-largest sector to transportation. And just to hit you with that one more time, we have some statewide energy goals. So important to think about reducing carbon pollution. Okay, now that you're a weatherization expert, you're totally sold, you know why you want to do it. How do you get started? Well, you've got CBOE on the presentation today to talk about the income-eligible weatherization side of things. And I'll leave that to them. But in addition to income-eligible weatherization, which is about if you fall at or below 80% of the median income, that's when you would qualify. There is also two other options. There's comprehensive weatherization, which is really the best bang for your buck, and you would work with an EEN Home Performance and Energy Star qualified contractor. And then the last one is the do-it-yourself angle. I'm not a handy person, but I will say, I'm going to talk about the list of things you can do to get the DIY rebate, which is $100. And I think even I can pull off three of six of these. So I did want to show you, as we have tonight with us, CBOE. If you're in Chittenden County, that's your go-to community action agency for this region. If you're not in Chittenden County and somehow you've joined tonight, you might have a different regional support system for you, and there they all are. Go to the next slide, and I can't click to the next slide. Hey, there we go. So let's say income-eligible weatherization is not the route that you're going to take. You could consider that Home Performance with Energy Star program and a home energy loan might be right up your alley. So no-interest financing is a key piece to the home energy loan, depending on your income range. And for many Vermonters, that low or no-interest financing is key to making projects work. So between incentives, financing, you could pay for a comprehensive project for a very low monthly payment. And I'll just tie into that, it's not just weatherization that's eligible for these funds or for this finance tool. You could layer that in with other projects you might do. So if you've got a few things that you're trying to do, maybe change how you heat or cool your home, this would be a part of it. And I have had questions about health and safety being associated with the home energy loan. And if you need more details about that, I'm happy to answer questions on that as well. Just to wrap up the do-it-yourself piece, if you do any of those three, any of the three of the six listed here, you could get $100 back. And the do-it-yourself rebate is a great way to just kind of get your foot in the door and start those projects, especially as we spend more time indoors. It's a great opportunity to both see what you need to work on, fix some things now, and then also start to think for the future what other things you might want to address with the comprehensive weatherization program. And you can find more information on the Button Up website, and we also have info@efficiencyvermont.com. So I'll wrap this section up before I talk a little bit about tips for renters and landlords. But what you can do next is you can give a call over to customer support here at Efficiency Vermont. You could schedule a free virtual home energy visit, which, again, those are scheduling out into January. You could also go to the Find a Contractor page on the Efficiency Vermont site, and you'd be able to connect with many different great contractors in your area. You could call CBOE. And if you are a Burlington resident, it's important to know that you can call Burlington Electric Department and check out information on their website for their program offerings. So if you're a Burlington resident, good to know, BED is the resource for you as well. Okay, so I'm going to run through. This part will take about 10 minutes. I'm going to talk a bit about renters and landlords and tips that you can use. And I'll just start this section. Oh, do we have any questions? Sorry, I didn't want to. I see nothing.
Hi, Becca, I haven't seen any questions come in the chat. Thanks for checking.
Perfect. I was like, before I keep on going, might as well pause. So I'll just start this section by saying that renters, landlords, supporting them is something that Efficiency Vermont has been working on for a long time. And we are developing programs around multifamily units, around supporting renters and landlords. And this is really a high-level overview. And we're always working on them and trying to improve them. So important thing to know here, we haven't quite cracked the nut yet on this one, but I think we're getting there. And I'd love to hear from folks if this presentation is helpful. Okay, so if you're a renter, you might think that there are not a lot of things that you can do in your home that you wouldn't be able to do. Well, there actually are a whole bunch of things that you can do as a renter to save energy. The first is if your apartment or house has its own thermostat, you can set the temperature down by 7, 10 degrees for eight hours a day. So that could be when you're sleeping, or if you happen to be one of the select few who doesn't work from home anymore, you might do that when you're away. You could also make sure that the light bulbs in your most commonly-used spaces, like your kitchen, living room, make sure that all of those are LED. It's a higher-quality lighting that will actually last longer and save you on utility bills. Next, you could remove dust buildup on your refrigerator and heating systems, and that will actually help your system perform better, so that you're paying less to heat your home. And that will actually improve the air quality and safety as well. If you want to watch a fun video, we've got one on how to vacuum out your bathroom fan, for example. It is a gross but rewarding process to clean these spaces. So highly recommend if you're into that kind of thing. You can add weather stripping to windows and doors, and that can help keep drafts out and heat in for the winter. You could also, for appliances, let's say your TV, for example, a lot of appliances have idle mode, which continues to draw power even when you're not actually using it. So either unplugging those items or turning off a power strip when you're not in the room or not using those devices is a great way to save energy. And then finally, you could use curtains or shades on your windows. In summer, you would close those curtains on the windows when you're getting a lot of sun throughout the day. And in the winter, you actually do the opposite. You want to get that sun into that room to heat things up. Okay, so I talked a lot about weatherization at the beginning. And when it comes to weatherization, renters are still eligible for the weatherization assistance program and that do-it-yourself rebate. And rented single-family homes can qualify for the comprehensive weatherization offers, the ones that Efficiency Vermont has. So there's also our Building Performance Program, which helps with multi-unit and multifamily residents. And you'll actually need your landlord's permission to move forward with any of those solutions. But in many cases, they would be responsible for the upfront cost of a project and then would receive the incentive. So we can help you figure out which solution might be best for you in your housing situation, but there are options if you're a renter or a landlord. Okay, so that's really the wrap-up to Tips for Renters and Landlords. And this slide is great because I think it really does say it all. If you're not sure where to start, whether it is with weatherization, like I talked about earlier, or you're a renter or a landlord, we're here to help, so give us a call. It's no fun to not know how to start a project, but Efficiency Vermont is happy to assist and help you get the ball rolling. So there we go. I can hand it over to Dwight. Oh, Dwight, you're muted.
Hey, darn it, that's twice today. Hey, everybody, thank you, Becca, for that great presentation. So we are going to jump right into CBOE and our low-income weatherization program. So go forward. So what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to talk a little bit about our program in general, and then I'm going to give you a case study of a recent project we had, the type of work that we did, and some of the benefits that we expect to see out of that. So all right, so how does our program work? Well, we're based on, we're income-eligible, we're funded by the Department of Energy and more by the State of Vermont's Home Weatherization Assistance Program. We really are soup to nuts. Once you've been determined eligibility, or the clients have been determined that they are eligible, the very first person you're going to see is an efficiency coach, and they're going to target the electrical side of things. We are the field implementers for EVT's program and Efficiency Vermont's program. But that coach, he's going to change light bulbs, look at appliances to see if we can switch those out for you or the client. And we're going to give the homeowner some really good coaching about how they can change their habits if they want to, to get even greater savings. So, and once those appliances are all in, then the next person you're going to see is an energy auditor, and they're going to look at the thermal side, all that building science, the stack effect, and where you're losing your heat, and how we can air seal and insulate your home in order to make it better. So he's going to go back, our auditor is going to go back, and he's going to do a lot of science stuff and figure out where you're losing your heat from and how leaky your building is, because we've done a blower door. And he's going to write up a full-scale energy audit. Okay, yep. Slide, I should have been going on slide, I've gone up the one, so go to the next one, there we go. So they're going to gather energy performance information and determine the most cost-effective energy improvements. Our program is driven off that we need to save a dollar for every dollar we spend. So if you happen to be in a rental situation and you qualify, and your property owner is working with us, you're going to get two visits. The first one will be with your property owner, and then the second one, in a walkthrough of what we may be able to do, so the property owner understands exactly what's going to happen to his building. But also, more importantly, we get buy-in from that property owner to understand how the work that we are going to do for him or her will make the longevity of their house much greater and lower their overall maintenance costs. We do require homeowners or property owners in a rental situation to kick in some of the funds for what I call the code-type stuff, electric, if there's necessary there, the heating system and some ventilation stuff. But we're pretty good at selling what we do, and we get a lot of buy-in from our property owners. And they'll ask us after the first property, hey, I've got another property, how do we go about that? So we're pretty good at getting buy-in. So then we're going to do that in-depth energy performance and write it up. So once the audit is written up, we're going to send out our great crew of folks, next slide, Becca, and do the energy retrofit. Our professional crews, we've got folks on staff that have been doing it for 20-plus years, very experienced, very mission-oriented, I'll say, to do the best job for our clients. They're going to come and install all those measures that the auditor has recommended. And I'll talk about those sort of measures in the case study. And most projects typically take between two and five days to complete. We are going to interrupt every aspect of your day when we come in. It's quite intrusive, but at the end, the finished product is well worth it, a safer, healthier, more energy-efficient home. So so once we're done the work, we have a staff member that's been in the weatherization program for 36 years, Mr. Larry Martel. He's going to come out and make sure that everybody from the energy coach, the energy auditor, and the crew did everything exactly right, and we are leaving your house in safe condition. He is very good at finding things that we miss, so no stone unturned. And I sleep well at night because of Larry. So that's our quality control inspection. And then, I think, we're, next slide. And so what is the impact of that work? In the statewide, in the past six years, we've done 6,600 homes. In the past program year, 900 homes were weatherized at the average cost of $8,500. 12 of that went to those health and safety things I measured. I mentioned heating, ventilation, those sorts of things. The average estimated savings were very conservative, and we say 24%. So if you're spending $1,000 on your heating bill, we're going to get $250 back per year about. So in program year 19 for CBOE, we weatherized 213 homes in Franklin, Grand Isle, Chittenden, and Addison Counties. Slide. So I'm going to jump right into a case study that we had. And this one came to us an interesting way. It didn't really come to us through the normal channels. We were referred to this house by Colchester PD for a visible hole in the roof from the exterior. There was a dinner plate-sized hole, big hole in the roof. So my colleague from CPD called me up, and he said, Dwight, help, I need help, what can you do? Well, I have a little bit of pot of money that I got, and I got one of our contractors to get over there that day and patch the hole. So that was the start of it. And then we had that individual reluctantly fill out our paperwork. He didn't really want the help, and we find that a lot with our clients, that, you know, some of our elderly clients, I've done it myself my whole life, I don't really want to. And we just simply tell them, listen, you've been paying taxes, you've been paying these taxes in your whole life, and now it's time for you to get some of it back. And that usually does the trick in about 99% of the cases. We can get them to fill out the paperwork and make sure they're eligible. Did I mention this is all at no cost to the client? So this is totally free if you're income-eligible. So we sent over the energy coach, as I said before, he did the man's side. He did some bulbs, some CO, and put in CO and smoke detectors, which were not present in the home, not working. And he installed a heat pump hot water heater, pulled out an old electric. This individual had been renting from GMP for a very long time, paid for it many times over. But we went ahead and pulled it out, put in a heat pump hot water heater, and for a single person living in a home, his energy costs are going to go way, way down, and he's not going to have any rental charges. So that's a good thing. We also had a grant program where we did falls prevention that we team up with Efficiency Vermont, as well as the Medical Center Hospital of Vermont in a pilot program. So we did some lighting for him in dark areas where he might fall. We put in grab bars for a shower, so he didn't fall getting in and out of the shower. And we also, he had not been into his basement to do things like laundry and such for, he said, three to five years, because there was no lights down there, and there was no railings to the basement, so he didn't feel safe. So that's just an add-on on the healthy home side of things that we do. So once we got that done, we moved on to the, the energy auditor went out. And these are things that are pretty much commonplace in every typical story and a half Cape in Vermont. We say that we can go into any home that was built last week and find things to do that make it more weatherized. So make it energy-efficient. So the things that we did, we're going to do a clean and tune. The furnace did not have enough return air, so it wasn't efficient. It wasn't moving the air properly and was going to prematurely fail because of that. There was a massive amount of duct leakage that we were going to repair, lacking attic insulation, untreated knee-wal areas, the doors were leaky, missing interior finishin' upstairs where the leak had caused a big hole in. So there was a direct, like a chimney through the sheet rock and out the roof. That, oh, by the way, raccoon, a family of raccoons had moved into. There were broken windows in the garage door, basement windows were single-pane, sills had no air sealing or insulation, and there was no function. sills had no air sealing or insulation, and there was no functioning bath and kitchen. So that's what we found. And next slide. So these are some photos of this home, and I wish I had a pointer. I'd show you exactly where that hole is, but if you look at the roof on the top picture, just to the left of the tree, there you go, that's where the hole in the roof was. And if you look to the left of that, you'll see that's the raccoon entrance. So, yep. And then top right, there's the windows we were talking about, that are single-pane that we were going to, we're going to do something about, and I'll show you that in a minute. And if you go to the middle picture, you can see on the left side and the bottom how that insulation looks all not in line with each other. And then if you look on the floor, there's not very much insulation there. And this is actually an after picture. I didn't have a good before picture. And you'll see, if you look to the top, you'll get a hint of what we're going to do, what we did. So now if you go to the bottom-left picture, you'll see there's why you have massive duct leakage, because some of the ducts are broken and pumping air where they're not supposed to be, and then it's obviously not getting to where you want the air to go. And then there's a picture of, on the right-hand side there, again, you see leaky return to the right, a little bit right, Becca, there you go, leaky return system. We can, we can connect virtually and get pointers where we need them. So that's what we had in the before situation. Are there any questions, Melanie, any questions come up on that?
There is one question about income eligibility. Allison is asking, can you share what the current income eligibility is for the CBOO program?
I'm going to, I'm going to refer you to our website at cboo.org. And right in the middle of the page, you'll see our programs and weatherize. They change yearly, so I don't commit them to memory, and it changes by size of family and county. So Chittenden Counties is right there. It's on our cboo.org. If you click on the weatherization button, that's right in the middle, then go to the left-hand column, you'll see qualifications, and that will give you the most accurate amounts at the time for the area that you live in, and also the size of your family. So hopefully that answers Allison's question.
I will put the link in the chat. Oh, Michelle, beat me to it.
You guys are awesome. So next slide, please. So again, auditor's recommendations, I listed the defects before. So the auditor went in and found all those things, and what, these are what he's going to recommend and that the program is going to pay for. Again, I didn't mention it before, which I think I did, at no cost to these income-eligible clients. We're going to clean, tune, and evaluate the heating system, make sure it's running properly, make sure it's not kicking out carbon monoxide, a harmful odorous colorless gas. And, and then we're going to make sure that's all good to go. We're going to add a 10-inch return to the furnace from the kitchen to make sure that it's not, it's getting enough return air, not starving itself off, not going to prematurely die. We're going to air-seal all those return ducts and plenums with mastic, which makes sure that the heated air is going exactly where we want it to, and it's doing what it's supposed to do. We're going to open blow the attic with 10 inches of cellulose. Weather strip and door sweep all exterior doors. We're going to patch that big hole in the second-floor ceiling, because that was a, I was making our blower door really high, as was the missing glass that we found. We created insulated removable window plugs for the basement. So in the fall time, now that he can go downstairs with his new, with his new banister and lighting, he can take those in and out, take them out for the summer if he wants to get light down there or fresh air. And in the wintertime, he can just pop them right back in, they're friction-fit, no, no hardware to deal with. We created an air, we're going to create an air barrier roof plane in the knee-wall areas. I'll explain that better with a picture. Tie-pair strap and dense-packed cellulose in the slant roof areas. I think you already, we already showed you a picture of that. Air-seal and insulate the sill areas, and then replace existing bath fan. And we're going to put in a smart switch. A smart switch runs the fans for a set amount of time per hour to ensure that we get nice, clean air coming in to replace the bad air that's going out. And then we also re-vended the dryer and bath fan to ensure that we're not building moisture in areas, and we're getting rid of moisture that is created in the home, so we don't have moisture problems, i.e. mold and mildew. So that's what the auditor said we were going to do, and he gave that work order to the crews, and they went out. And we're going to show you what they did. Starting at the top left and working our way across, there's mastic on the ducts. You can see how we sealed up every joint with mastic. If you look at our, you can see a window plug there. No, nope, there's no window plug in there. Actually, there is, but it's from the outside. And then above, you see where the sill work is. There's, you can see the higher insulation that, to the right a little bit, there you go. And we put in a higher plug in there, we foam sealed it in, and there's insulation behind that, either six inches of fiberglass or blown cellulose, I think in this case, cellulose. To the right of that is that brand-new heat pump hot water heater that we put in. Very energy-efficient, much more efficient, and best is, it doesn't burn fossil fuels. We, another one of our big goals, we weather stripped and door swept, and door swept that front door. As you can see, you can see the weather strip, door sweep is on the inside. There's that, and starting in the middle row on the left, there's that fancy railing that we popped in so he could access his basement. There's his brand-new bathroom fan, and you can see that there had been some moisture issues and that we were taking care of. If you look, that one is vented out properly. If you look, and it's in a much more advantageous position to remove the moisture. There's one to the left a little bit that you can see why that probably wasn't removing all of the moisture. There's a weather strip on that door right there, you can see from the inside. The picture on the bottom, that's the slant insulation you can see there. They put tie-pair across it, strapped it, so it was nice and, and it was going to stay there a long time. Blew it with cellulose, dense-packed it, and then foamed it up. And then you can see on the next picture, the gable ends, we did the same thing. And you'll notice that we did not do anything to that knee-wall floor, because we've changed where the thermal boundary goes, and we've made it much more easily defined. Much better product. So, next slide. So a little pre-and-post comparison for you. We talked about that air leakage rate or CFM 50, we determined that with our blower door. Before, it was 4,272. And that was after we fixed the roof, the hole in the roof. So I'm, you know, giving, I'm cutting myself off a little bit there, but afterwards, we dropped it by 50% to 2160 CFM 50. That's a pretty good reduction right there. But more appropriately, you can look at the next set of numbers, is the BTU per square foot per heating degree day. That's the, the, the gas mileage of the house, so to speak. How, how efficient is it? Previously, it was burning six and a half BTUs per square foot per heating degree day. After we were done, it was at 4.02 BTUs per square foot per heating day. So we improved our gas mileage of the house, improved our energy efficiency by 38%, so above that 24 I said before. So this was a really effective house. We're saving 48.84 million BTUs in the lifelong, in the life of the measures, so that's, that's huge. And now the cost of the day. So weatherization costs, we spent $7,470. Efficiency Vermont, including the heat pump hot water heater, we spent $20, $2,025. And the falls prevention program railings, lighting and such was $151.98. So so what does that all mean? We're going to save 196 gallons of fuel oil a year, so about $400 of combined client money and fuel assistance money. And so, you know, that's about, well, here I use the $1.75, but, you know, it's about $400, $350 to $400 a year cost, energy cost saved for that client. And that's per year, and the life of the measures is, you know, some of them are out to the life of the home, some are, you know, we say that weather strips and door sweeps, door sweeps should be replaced every seven years. So next slide. So that's mine. That's all I got.
I'm, I'm happy to take questions now. And if not, I have questions for Dwight, too.
Oh, sure. I was going to say, I did really well, and there are no questions, but.
Well, I just had one question, which was, you said that there's a normal process, or you said that this individual didn't come to you through the normal process. And I was wondering, do you typically get folks, so folks just reaching out and filling out the information and signing up for the program? Or are there other more common ways that you get folks to sign up for the free weatherization services?
There are two real ways that we get majority of our clients, well, three ways. Word of mouth, you know, energy, I'm educating a lot more energy committees. I know, by the way, if you want me to come to your energy committee, I will gladly come to any of them in my territory, and I'll make sure that if you're not in our territory, we'll get one of the other directors or staff members from those organizations to come. But word of mouth is our number-one way. We do a fuel assistance mailing, which is the second way. But third way is, once we do a, once we weatherize a home, we ask our clients to give us feedback. And the very last question we ask is, which I think is one of the most important questions, is, are any of your neighbors or friends that you can think of that would need our service? We very seldom get one back, which, without a recommendation. So we take that as a compliment.
Makes sense.
And we get a lot of them that way. So those three ways, and then that's the normal way. You send in an application, and, and we get you on, on the list. Occasionally, we get one from an energy committee that that will ask us for help and with a certain client, and we get him an application, and we, we put him in the waitlist, and, and we get him going. But we are, we will, we will provide applications to any energy committee that would like them, because we want to make sure that we're getting the broadest, the broadest spread across everywhere.
I see one question in the chat, which I, I have my version of an answer for, which is, the question is, how can I weatherize my garage door? And I have, oddly enough, this question came up earlier in the week on a different Button Up Vermont event, and I have the answer that is not very satisfying that I can give, which is, you know, I guess the first question would be if it's an all-glass door, or like what the, what the construction of the door is. And then after connecting with Matt Sargent, who's one of our energy consultants at Efficiency Vermont, he suggested storm panels for wintertime. So okay, it's an old window with four windows. Yeah, I, I don't know, besides that one time I got the answer from Matt, this, like, recently, that suggested storm panels, I don't know.
Well, I would make sure that your windows are caulked in, and there's no, you know, they're not rattling, so they're nice and tight, so there's no air coming around then. And then they do sell a garage door weather strip kit. So it's similar to what goes on a front door, only it allows the door to operate. So weather strip the edges and make sure that all of your connections of your panels are, that don't, you know, that don't need to move, are caulked, and that's about the best you can do with a garage door without replacing it. Joe, I see a question on the chat. Joe is asking about the example home you described. Did you say there's no cost to the homeowner for all that work that was done? That is correct. For income-eligible clients that own the home, there is no cost to them. In a rare occasion where they have deferred maintenance costs, like a new roof needs to be put on, or, and we don't have the funds at that point, because we have specific funds for home repairs, and they're able to, we may ask them to kick in for those sorts of things, but for weatherization, there is no cost whatsoever to income-eligible clients. You're welcome, Joe.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing any more questions, so I'm happy to, I was going to put in the chat the link to schedule a virtual free home energy visit. And then, if we have a moment, I'd love to take the opportunity to mention the Share the Warmth campaign, which is the Button Up Vermont Fund. If you are someone who can have the ability to share some warmth, this year for Button Up, we have a fundraiser to support income-eligible weatherization in a very specific way, which is to help give funds to support projects that typically Dwight couldn't use his current funding source to cover. That would be something like vermiculite remediation, for example. So if you're a Vermonter who has the capacity to donate to this type of fund, highly recommend it to share the warmth with your neighbors. And I know that it's exciting, we've raised just about $52,000 so far for the campaign, so, pretty cool. And I'll put the link in there. Oh, and I see a question. Are there any rebates at this time to replace windows? For Efficiency Vermont, the answer is no. And, but I'm happy to share a link to some information on when you might actually want to do some weatherization instead of replacing windows. One of the main reasons that there is not a current rebate to replace windows is because typically, it's actually not the most cost-effective choice. So I can give you some information on that, and then ultimately, replacing windows is something that really falls as a must-do. There's some resources as well on that. So I'll go ahead and find that.
Becca, this is Melanie. Can you talk a little bit about the virtual energy visit? And in particular, for energy committees, if and how they can promote those visits with their communities and their residents in their communities?
Sure. So I think I didn't, I can't remember if I did an intro to Michelle, so I'm going to do it in case I did not, which is, not only do you have this great Button Up Vermont campaign where you can spread news about the visits, you also have a great person on the call today, my colleague, Michelle McCutcheon-Shore, who is going to be able to proactively talk to you about other things as well. So I'll talk about ways you can support the home energy visits, but that's not your only option moving forward, even when the Button Up campaign ends. So the virtual home energy visits are something new that we're trying out, in part because of COVID-19, but it actually seems to be a good tool if you're the kind of person who, you know, might not necessarily want someone to come over to your house anyway. You have a great use of a smartphone, you can walk around your home or a smart device, and point out specific things that you might want to have addressed with an energy consultant. And we've got a community partners page on the Button Up website, which has some stock posts. So if you're an energy committee and you want to post on Facebook, or from Porch Forum, or maybe a town email list that you frequent, there's a stock post that you can use with the link to schedule a virtual home energy visit. And we have up to 500 of those available throughout the state for the Button Up campaign. And the important thing to know about those visits is since they are scheduling out into January, if you're talking to a community member who really wants to do something right away, they might want to consider doing the find a contractor route first, going to that webpage, but they could do those things at once, they could schedule a But they could do those things at once. They could schedule a visit, look into the find a contractor at the same time. Or if they're really not sure that they're going to do a project and then next few months in our comfortable waiting, it's a great option. And it's a starting point to have a neutral person, a third-party person from Energy Efficiency Vermont, who can answer questions for you on a whole host of things, not just weatherization, but appliances, energy savings and all sorts of those broad questions you might have. So, I'll put in the chat that windows piece and the community partners page.
Thanks, Becca. Yeah, just as Becca referenced, my name is Michelle McCutcheon-Shore and I'm the community manager that supports any energy committee in Chittenden County who's looking for Efficiency Vermont information or resources, or if you want ideas of things to do outside of Button Up, I'm here to help. So I'm going to throw my email in the chat so that if anyone wants to reach out to me after this, just to talk about, give you some resources I can provide or some ideas for you. Again, outside the Button Up campaign, your energy committee is looking to do, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm here to help specifically around any of our services or programs.
Well, on that note. Yeah, if there's any final questions, I think. This was good. I learned a lot, too.
Thank you all for attending.
Thanks, CCRPC, for putting this on, by the way. You've got a really solid regional planning commission in Chittenden County. So, lucky you.
You are very lucky.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Um, just send myself or Michelle or Becca or Dwight an email if you guys have any questions. Our email addresses are pretty easy to find on our website. And take care. Stay warm.
Throw my, I'm just throwing my email up in here. And again, if you have questions about low-income weatherization, give me a call or email and we can schedule a visit to your energy community meetings.
It just started snowing outside here, so.
Yeah, button up, like it's coming. Cool. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Later.